All set? All right. Thank you, everyone. Welcome to [inaudible 00:01:24]. For those of you who are visiting tonight, I'm gonna officially open this regular meeting of the Board of Select for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. If you would please rise during the pleasurable allegiance.
[inaudible 00:01:38]. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If it's okay with my colleagues, we have a couple of outside presentations tonight, so I'm gonna, if it's all right with you, I wanna skip down to seven, eight, and nine. Take those in order. Any objection to that before we proceed with the agenda?
The only thing about the agenda, can I add something?
Yeah.
Later?
Yeah.
I'd like to add some later on something.
I know. We haven't had any late meetings in a while.
We feel we gotta get the funds as soon as quick.
Oh, sorry. Eileen?
She needs to go first.
Okay.
That's why I put her first.
All right. New information. Eileen?
Mm-hmm.
Are you pressed for time? You've gotta get?
Yes.
Well, I have an early flight tomorrow morning.
Oh.
So I would like to go home.
So you don't want us to mess up your vacations?
Occasion!
All right. Then why don't we start with six, seven, and nine? It's all right with you guys. We'll start with six.
I'll be sure.
I don't think that's gonna... So, Eileen, if you wanna take the floor and describe the memo that we have here on the proposed fees?
The request is to kind of go in line with the way the schools reserve facilities. And so we went to a four-hour minimum at a rate of $25 an hour, which would be towns, individuals, or nonprofits. And then it would be $50 for like a profit organization that's in town. And it's just basically to help cover our staff and the extra work that it takes when someone does reserve the facility here, whether it's the gym, the GP room, the front lawn. It's a lengthy, it's a process to do the application, and you have to get information from these groups to make sure that we, our staff, will know what's happening. And so we felt that a $25-an-hour fee would not, is not outrageous to charge. We presently only charge 15. This does not include if a scout group or somebody has a meeting in this room, in here, while we have programs going on. It's the large functions that are happening in the general purpose room, the gym, the front lawn, where we have to provide staff. Plus, we also have to prep before the event a lot of times. I mean, Janet alone, one week, spent two days going through all the applications, between field applications and use of this building. Like, it took her like a day and a half to go through all the applications, 'cause there's a whole harm list we have them sign, there's scheduled events that we request, the liability insurance. So we felt that we needed to adjust the fee schedule to help cover the cost of our staff doing their job.
Let me ask a question of Eileen. What about the charitable organizations? Are we gonna charge them the hourly use for the front lawn?
If I have to have a staff member here, I have to cover that staff member.
So in other words?
So they're regents.
Yeah. Like, you know, right now, we don't, we charge, like, Bethel Pride has an event coming, and we're charging them for using the...
The carnival?
It's 15 dollars right now.
Okay.
So we're looking to raise it to 25 an hour.
Same thing with the charity, kind of thing.
We haven't charged...
Fund ratio.
Like, we don't charge Scotty Fund or St. Mary's, you know? So there's, we're trying to come up with a balance. We haven't charged them in the past. We're not charging them now. I think we should charge them something.
I do too.
I have a staff member here the entire time that the carnival's going on, this entire time that this, you know, if the bathrooms are open and they need to be used by people, we have to have a staff member here.
I fully agree with you. I think we should.
So, I mean, I don't wanna go into their money that they're making, but I have to...
You have to pay for your people.
I have to cover my costs. If we do, like them, we keep the 15 dollar-an-hour rate, that's totally up to you guys and do, you know?
Well, I think before each event like that, when it comes to charity, I think you should come before the Board of Select, and we'll decide what that fee should be then.
Oh, okay.
Well, I...
But then you're gonna end up with them, 'cause I will tell you, we'll get an application this week for an event that wants to happen in four weeks. And to have to do that every time, that's another process that you're adding to the mix.
Well, did you, yeah, I think we have to have it established in advance, so they know.
So the people, when they're applying, they know the fee structure.
What it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
I have a question on the gymnasium, Eileen. Why is that 50? Do you have two people for the, when someone uses it?
We have to clean it before, afterwards. And it's a lengthy process of cleaning the gym when there's a, an event that happens. I have to bring another staff member in to sweep and mop the floor.
So I just theoretically, if someone rented a gymnasium for four hours, you're gonna charge them $200?
Yes.
Would it make, would it, well, that, so currently, you're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You could change the minimum. If they use it for four hours, that's what they get. If they only use it for two hours, then we would only charge them for the two hours if we don't wanna do the four-hour minimum.
So currently, you're charging 15 dollars an hour?
About 15 dollars an hour, yeah.
Right? So the gymnasium is pegged at 50 an hour because of the cleaning?
Right. The extra work it takes to use it, to clean the gym.
Do you, what do you, what do you think of the idea of keeping it 25? 25 dollars covers the basic labor costs just to be there, correct?
Yeah.
What if you had a separate cleaning fee, like 25 dollars an hour plus?
$100 if they use it, whatever it is?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
100, 150?
Yeah. I read this, Paul was saying.
Yeah.
Right now, as I'm reading the use of, community use of facilities here, we've got a general purpose room, stage, gymnasium, senior center, cafe. I think then you gotta also put something down for the front lawn.
Okay.
Well, yeah. If staff is present, then yes. That's true. Did the Park and Rec Commission review this already?
Yes.
So they approved this?
Yes.
Okay. Marty, a question for you. Does this, whatever we adopt tonight, does this have to go to a public hearing before it becomes?
No.
No? Okay.
But I have a couple of questions.
Okay. Go ahead.
You already asked the one whether Park and Rec has already agreed to this. I think it would be easier, instead of putting it down 25 dollars per hour and put down, all have a four-hour minimum, you just put down 100 dollars, and then it's 25 dollars an hour after the first four hours.
Okay.
That way, it's pretty clear that they know. You look at this quick, you're saying to yourself, okay, I'm gonna use it for an hour, it'll be 25 dollars. And I'm sorry, Eileen, I, either I didn't catch it, or what, you've got individuals or nonprofits written in here, then on the right, you have 50 dollars for organization, 50, 100, and 50. What is that on the right?
That would be like, like, for profit organizations that would wanna reserve it. Like, we've had people that run, like, a wrestling...
So the hourly rate changes if this...
Changes for, for somebody that makes a profit on, like...
So that would be, I just think you have to put for, for profit organization.
Okay.
That's all I have.
How did you arrive at the four-hour minimum?
'Cause that's what the schools do for their facilities, for when someone uses their gymnasium in the, like, an auditorium or anything like that, so...
And then, well, probably, I'm guessing, it's probably because that's what the bargaining agreement has as a minimum, right?
With the custodians.
Is ours the same?
No, because...
With staff?
My, mine is a three-hour, if I, my full-time staff. This is usually done, the people that man the office are usually part-time staff.
Okay.
So that's why I said we could do a minimum of two hours, you know? So, but...
In your experience, have individuals or groups come in and needed an hour or two hours, or is that, is it usually a bigger block anyway?
It's usually between two and four for most functions, because they need 45 minutes to an hour to set up, 45 minutes to an hour to take down, and then their recital is an hour and a half.
Okay.
You know, like, we've had Indian dance groups come in, and, you know, they use the GP room, and they come in, set up, and take down, and that kind of thing, so...
How about if we changed it to the three-hour minimum?
I was gonna, I was gonna suggest that. Okay. Now, what about, I wanna get, get some clarification on the nonprofits and the things like the, like the Republicans and the Democrats, who have their meetings here. We are definitely nonprofits, but...
And it's...
Not in the same sense.
And it's not for, it's not geared towards the groups that utilize it for meetings, 'cause we have Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts that are here Mondays and Tuesdays, and you guys are in the other parts of the building. It's mainly when they utilize the large areas that we have to do extra setup and work.
The Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts, they use the senior center cafeteria usually.
They use the cafeteria. And we don't charge those groups, 'cause we're already here. We're running our programs. So anything, this is outside of us being here. It's the Friday nights, it's the Saturday morning. Like, another example is the chambers doing a kids expo here this Sunday. So we're charged down there, get charged 150 dollars for their function.
Let me ask you the other question that I'm always involved in. It's the summer series, the music on Sunday. How are we gonna handle that?
Well, that, that's a town, it's a town function, so I, my staff is here. So there's no fee for that. There's no fee for the food truck, 'cause it's a town, it's sponsored by us. So it's like, it would be like me, like, the schools don't charge us a rental fee for the use of the schools. They charge us a custodial fee to clean up after we're in there. But I don't have to pay the four-hour minimum of whatever their fee is, because I'm a town agency. So we would handle food truck Friday like that, you know? I mean, I provide staff, and it's, it's a town event, you know?
Yeah.
So I...
That's a great area with food trucks with me.
Well, it's one of those things, there's, there's money made, so should whatever's left in the kitty, 25 percent go to Park and Rec to help cover the thing? That would be something Matt and I could, you know what I mean? Whoever runs food truck, you know, if, if we want, but to me, again, it's a, the town is providing something to the community, and that's what on my job is, is provide something to the community, so...
You do a great job. I have to say, your department, your revenues pay for itself.
You know, so I look at it that I could eat the four hours of the, whatever the rate is for my staff to be here, because we pick up afterwards, and we, you know what I mean? It's a town, that's a town function, so...
Right. I understand.
In moving the fee up to 50 dollars for organizations, what do they, what have they been paying?
They've been paying the same. We don't get a lot of those outside the, for-profit organizations.
Yeah.
You know, 'cause a lot of times, it's out-of-town organizations, and we really don't wanna rent, like, we want them to go utilize the schools or something.
So if we were gonna...
Keep it all the same? You could do that. I don't know.
Yeah. So, but if we were gonna go back to the gymnasium issue, the cleaning fee, what should that be? What's it?
Well, three hours for a full-time person to come in and do that is, is that, that's like, between 35 and 40 hours and dollars an hour, so it's like 150 dollars.
All right.
Would be the fee for that, 'cause it's more of a full-time person that comes in and does that.
Okay.
Or, yeah, so...
And you wanna put down the front lawn?
Yeah. I wrote that down there.
Just one, when they use a gymnasium, do they use a lot of it still? Is that included?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. So the front lawn would be the same as the others, 25 dollars an hour?
Yeah. 'Cause usually it's, they have a function, and they want the access to the building to use the bathroom.
Okay. All right. All right. Okay, so what I have here then is a flat rate of 25 dollars per hour for general purpose rooms, stage, gymnasium, senior center, cafe, and front lawn, with a three-hour minimum, cleaning fee for the gymnasium only of 150 dollars, a flat fee, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And then 50 dollars flat fee per hour for organizations, for for-profit organizations. Did I capture that correctly? Eileen?
Yep.
Okay. Are you guys good with that?
Yeah. Second, you made that motion.
Yeah. Well, I'll turn, I'll put that in the form. Actually, Dion will convert that into a motion for me in just a minute.
I'll second the conversion.
Okay. Any other...
Yeah, I just have a question. I see some rules here.
Bennett.
Is, do we have the, Marty, do we still, cannot allow the bouncing castles?
I'd have to check with Bill Guerra. I know that there's, there's...
They're prohibited.
Something changed, I know that. I think if they have, if I remember right, I think what it is, is that we now, with the insurance we have now, it might be allowed now. I'd have to find out, though.
Okay.
I'll find out.
Subject to Town Council and insurance approval.
All right. So I'll add to that motion, subject to Town Council and the insurance review.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Are you also talking about a three-hour minimum for the profit organizations, too?
Yeah. Okay. Yep. Okay. Any other questions?
[inaudible 00:01:53].
Yeah.
The only reason I gave you Bennett was, we went from, again, trying to make everything equal across, is when we, the insurance was 500,000, and we upped it to a million. That somebody has to have a liability insurance for a million dollars' worth of coverage instead of 500,000, so...
Okay. Well, so, but the fees are the same, right?
Fees are the same. Everything is all the same. And we kind of laid out the rules in detail, and that's why it says no inflatables, no fire, no open fires, because we didn't have them, like, listed like that, and we've got caught with people using them, and then, so...
What about adjacent park Bennett? Did we ever get any requests for rentals of that? I know that's sort of a public, open park.
Oh, the one at McCawer?
Yeah.
Yeah, we presently rent the pavilion to residents for 50 dollars a day.
Okay.
On a Saturday, or, well, any day.
Does that cover your cleanup fees?
For when someone has a function at the pavilion, yeah. It basically covers, there's a three-hour minimum for my staff to come in on a Saturday to clean the bathrooms, and that covers, that 50 dollars covers that on a Saturday or a Sunday. So basically...
Could you think about raising it to 75? This will...
I would say for next year, we can reconsider it, 'cause we've already booked dates for this year at 50 dollars.
I don't wanna lose my identity.
You, you, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Rabbit.
But I will have to say, it probably wouldn't change our numbers, 'cause people pay, people utilize it.
Okay.
And we, and, and we get quite a few non-residents, but we, residents take the dates and utilize it, so...
Okay.
I, I, we can revisit it in the, after the summer season, and then go from there.
I have a question on Bennett's. Also, what about nonprofits, like the fishing game and those people?
They still pay the rate, the rate that's there for a resident.
For a resident?
For a resident. So, and that's been like this for several years now, the fees.
Yeah. So those are the same. Yeah. Marty, with regard to the change in insurance and the timelines and the restrictions on reg, I don't think those are things we need to vote on, are they? Those are just policy.
Okay.
Department policy?
If you wanna classify them as rules, I would, I'd let them stay with Park and Rec.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the new fee schedule. Are there any more comments or questions?
Just, just one off the, for Eileen. Did we ever think of putting an aerator in McCawer?
I...
The pond?
It was just mentioned at our meeting last week, when we are finalizing our master plan.
Okay.
It was mentioned that we should consider doing that. And we need to, we need to get the state to put carp in it.
Okay.
Carp will take care of that.
So you guys are addressing that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
The Board, would you consider reducing the fee for nonprofits at the Bennett Park, such as like the fishing game?
The, the problem is, is I still have to cover all the other expenses with Bennett. And, and I can't change that now, 'cause I've already collected fees for this season.
I'll leave it alone.
I can revisit it at the end of the season.
Well, let's look at it for next year, then, please.
Okay.
I mean, they're, you know, a great organization. They do a lot for the kids, you know, the fishing tournament and all that.
Yeah. But once you go nonprofit, you're gonna, more than half of the people that utilize, more than half that utilize Bennett are non-for-profit.
Well, maybe we'll have to make another classification.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so we'll do this earlier this season.
Well, we'll visit the two fee structures for the parks at the end of the season.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So, any other questions?
No.
Hearing on, on the motion on the floor, those in favor, say whoever's saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How early is your flight?
6:20. I'll be in Florida by 9:30.
Yeah, you'll be napping on the news.
Is that yours?
Okay, so, all right, thank you very much.
Bringing home some good sweat. Okay.
Great trip.
Thank you for, thank you for your patience, everyone. Okay, now I'd like to go to item number seven. And I'll turn the floor over to Janice. This is Mr. Menoya, Diversified Properties. This is a referral to us for a deferral of assessment increase application for development at 36 Stony Hill Road. So if you wanna, either one of you can...
Yeah, so the recommendation came from EDC, so Mike is gonna present the application, but I will say that the applicant is here, Mr. Nick Menoya.
Yes, Mr. Menoya, thank you for being here.
So if you have any questions specific to the project, he's here to answer those.
I, I have a confession to Mike. Can't see here quietly. The packet that you asked me to print off, I, it's printed off for you, but I dropped it in the hallway, and papers went everywhere. So I tried to, some of it was, was numbered, and I could put it back, but I don't know if everything's gonna flow along correctly.
Well, let's...
It's, it's in here.
It's in.
It's in there, but it might not be, it's easy to find, and I apologize.
You also have Mr. Menoya's full application in front of you. Any questions? But this was the information I sent you a couple, a day ago.
Yeah, there's, there's actually two sheets. First is the letter, which hopefully you guys have had a chance to look at, okay? And then there is the deferral in assessment increases application summary, so the summary sheet that shows the dollar. The dollar figure has been signed off by Izzy, our assessor, and has come up with these numbers based on what we know as of today in 2019. And what we have is an application for a project that does fit under our recently approved tax ordinance, in the sense that we have a development project for 20,900-foot medical building, commercial structure, along with 117 units of residential, all of which is right now architecturally at the conceptual level. Nothing has been put into process, and as a factor for the enticement to complete the project, they have applied for the tax ordinance. Now, in looking at it, the intent is, we approved the tax ordinance from an EDC perspective and moved on to the Board of Select, and back probably a little less than a year ago, was to enhance our commercial development in town. So, but with commercial development, we have also incorporated mixed use. Mixed use defined as both commercial and residential. Now, being, and the way the commission looked at this, being, it's, it's certainly, we don't wanna have any ownership of trying to drive any additional residential growth. That's not our charge. Our charge is to grow our commercial growth. And we looked at the structure of 20,900 square feet of additional commercial space, but to entice this developer through our tax ordinance, we then looked at, because it, we define as a mixed use, both commercial and residential. We defined the residential of 20,900 square feet for also consideration and tax abatement. How we came to that conclusion was essentially, once again, driving the commercial piece, that if we looked in our TOD district, using that as an example, where if we had a two-story structure, where we were going to have commercial space underneath on the first floor, and the potential for apartments or residential on the second floor, then the footprint, square footage-wise, would be approximately, if not exactly, the same. We applied that same logic as we looked at this particular project, because, you know, the bulk of the residential would not get any deference in tax. We're only looking at that portion that equals what the commercial value is. And then if you look at, so that's, in essence, what the letter says. It qualifies over $3 million, 'cause the project itself is approximately a $20 million project estimate. And based on that, that allows for a seven-year deferment on the tax side. So we took the 20,900 on the commercial side and added the 20,900 from the residential side, and left the balance of the residential project on its own. It's got nothing to do with the deferment. And if you take a look at the numbers, and in summary, the town basically puts a $4 million annual tax in total, based on today's number, into play after, that's, that's 4 million over seven years, less the actual deferred amount, which it represents 184,000 per year, or 500, no, sorry, 1.2 million after seven years. So we get the balance between the 4 million and the 1.2 after seven. And then after seven years, whatever the mill rate is, and certainly that could've changed over the course of the seven years, we would then get whatever prevailing rates would be at that point in time. So based on those numbers, based on adding that commercial space to the space, we thought that the application under that basis would be reasonable for the town, and an effort on our part to try to entice our developer to develop the property and contribute back to the town.
Okay, so the bottom line is, the town continues to realize a minimum of, just rounded up, the 385,000 in tax revenue per year.
Correct.
For seven years.
For seven years.
Yeah, depending on what the mill rate is.
Right. So, you know, based on 4 million, we're giving 1 to 2 over seven years. And keep in mind, that 4 million is not accurate. The taxes are gonna be higher.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, but, so...
This is just one building, Mike?
It's, no, it's two, the commercial structure is a separate structure.
Oh, okay.
Separate structure, and then the residential are, I think it's more pod-based, and just like, you know, how it's gonna be set up within the, in the property. 117 units in total, is my understanding, for the residential.
Now, this is gonna be a medical facility?
That's the commercial, commercial, correct.
Do they, do they have any guarantee from any medical, like, Western Connecticut Health or anything like that?
No, there's nobody, there's nobody on the horizon today.
Nobody. Okay. And, there's different medical industry.
Okay. I happen to sit on the board of a hospital myself in New Jersey.
No, I spent two years at a, no, my question is, I know how Western Connecticut's expanding up and down Route Six, okay? Do we reach a point where there's too much medical space? Now, that's, that's my issue right now.
That's part of the concern.
Yeah.
So if I may...
Sure, go ahead.
Are you finished? I don't wanna interrupt.
Go ahead.
Okay. So I'm Nick Menoya. I'm the managing partner of the ownership of the thirty-six Stony Hill Road property. And I'm the, one of two partners that's responsible for the development from the time that we took ownership several years ago. So just to take a step back a little bit. So we actually suspended construct, we started construction on the project. Most of you, if not all, have probably seen the site. It's not very attractive. It's not exactly what we had in mind when we came to Bethel. We're very excited about the opportunity to come to Bethel and develop a multifamily project, mixed-use project, which is what we do. We, we've built thousands of multifamily units. Over the years, I've built large-scale projects in Manchester and Hampden and Ridgefield and West Hartford and some other communities in Connecticut. So, and we had been out of the Connecticut market for a number of years. It's challenging here, to be honest with you, from a financing perspective. So we were fortunate to have acquired the site. We were very excited about it. We worked with Beth and her staff. We pulled together the rest of the plans and the permits, and we started construction. And we started with our own capital. And I'm gonna give you a little history, 'cause I think it's, I think it's important for you to understand kinda how we got here. So we funded to date almost six million dollars of cash into this project. We have no debt on the property. So everything that's happened to date, including the land acquisition and all of the construction, is out of pocket dollars. Along the way, we worked with several different lenders in your market with open anticipation and expectation. They would provide construction financing for the project, but it's been very challenging. And I happen to sit on a board of directors of a large bank in New Jersey. It's about a six and a half billion dollar bank. And I chair the loan committee there as well. So I know a fair amount about construction financing. That bank is a very, very active construction lender in the metro New York, New Jersey market. Connecticut lenders are basically afraid of your own market, to be honest with you. When you talk to the lenders, they, they feel like they don't have the confidence in the, in the market. It's been very challenging to put together the financing for the project. So while we started the construction in the project, the game plan was somewhere along the way, we'd saddle up with a lender, and then we'd just continue with the construction loan like we always do on the projects, and we would continue through the, to the end. So along the way, the metrics changed in the way that banks are financing multifamily projects. It went from where it was at probably as high as eighty percent loan to cost, down to what's more in the sixty-five to seventy percent range, if you can attain the financing at all. In addition to, one of the things that happened to us with the site in particular was there's a tremendous amount of organics on that property. And every pad that's been developed out there, and if you, if you drive onto the site, you'll see several of the multifamily pads or pods have been, the soil's been replaced with undercut, we call it, so the organic type material's been removed, new material brought in, compacted in one-foot lifts, ready for building construction, including the one foundation that started. So the cost overruns along the way have already exceeded six hundred thousand dollars for soil conditions, that we were aware of by geotechnical reports, but they're much, much worse than the reports even talked about. And we're not finished yet. So the metrics changed for the financing. The soil conditions are very difficult. We actually shut the job down, 'cause we weren't gonna throw any more good money after bad. And frankly, until we learned of the ordinance that was put together for the abatement, we had no intentions of restarting the project. We're just gonna shut it down indefinitely, because the economics and the metrics really don't work. So when we became aware of the ordinance that was put together, we thought, what a godsend, because this is exactly what this project needs. And it was almost like it was written for our project, to be honest with you. We met the definition, so we thought, we worked with Beth and we had, I believe, the attorney, the board attorney produced some correspondence that in fact, we met the definition. So we thought, this is perfect. It'll meet the definition. It'll create enough incentive to move the needle on the economics of the project to make it viable again, and we can just start the project in the spring. Now, which is already somewhat past, we'd hoped to bring the project out of the ground probably a month ago. We started working, and I have to sit, take my hat off, Janice and the EDC have been great. They've been working with us to try to put together some kind of a program. So I don't, I don't wanna seem like we're not complimentary, or that we, we, we think that it's not a benefit to us. It's of great benefit to what's being proposed, but it's not enough, unfortunately, from where we sit. So my objective tonight is to try to have a discussion with the board, to try to take full advantage of the ordinance that was put, put in place. And I understand the TOD kind of analogy. We do lots of master planned communities, including one that's on the Hudson River in Sleepy Hollow, New York, in Westchester. It's a billion-dollar project that we have, and it's fourteen hundred multifamily units. It's a hundred and forty thousand feet of retail. It's a hotel. It's office. It's four hundred and fifty apartments. It's a gin, it's a, it's a mini-city. So we understand, and it's, and it's sandwiched between two Metro North train stations. So it's a true TOD, TOD type of development. We have another one at the Jersey Shore in Long Branch, where we have four stories of stick construction over a one-story retail. Again, it's a true mixed-use project. It's six hundred multifamily units and a hundred thousand square feet of retail with liquor licensed bars, restaurants. It's a whole ten-acre urban renewal site. So we do lots of that master planned community. This site on Stony Hill Road is not a TOD. It's a, it's a fifteen, eighteen acre site, much, much different. The analogy to one floor over another, trying to make compatible twenty thousand nine hundred square feet of one commercial to the residential, really doesn't apply to this type of a project, in our opinion. And again, we're trying to move the needle to jumpstart the project again. And what's being proposed is terrific, and I don't wanna, again, seem like, you know, gee, we're not gracious and grateful for what's being proposed, but it's not going to get us there. So to the extent that we can work together to try to enhance the program, to be able to bring this project out of the ground, that's our goal, and that's our objective. And I agree with you that unfortunately, the, the medical space is going to be difficult.
That's right, because each, each specialty, it requires different physical specifications.
They really do. In Newtown, there's a couple of buildings that I think are half-empty that are, that are medical. So we're competing in the marketplace. And again, the only way to, to compete effectively is to offer financial incentives. So whatever you offer us, we're gonna pass through, and we're going to try to make this work between the financing and the incentives to do a build-to-suit for some type of medical operation.
Right.
And that's how it's gonna jumpstart the project. It's not going to be, if it's, if you offer an incentive that's, you know, advantageous but not enough, it doesn't get us there. We really didn't accomplish anything. So that's really...
Have you field tested this with the medical community? That's, because I'm, I'm just focusing on the medical portion.
Sure.
That's gonna be the base of your product, okay?
And it is, because I, as I understand, the, the potential program, they're, they run a kind of a parallel track, in any event, so they have to, both the medical building and the residential have to be CO'd before the program even kicks in. So even if we were successful with the residential, we have to create enough incentive, whether we reach in our pocket, or it's driven by the incentive on the abatement, to induce somebody to do the medical building. Otherwise, it's ice in the winter. You can grant us the abatement, but we can't get there until we do the medical building. So we have to create enough incentive vis-à-vis what the town is willing to do and what we can reach in our pocket and deliver that medical space, so that whatever portion is done for the residential, we can get to the finish line by CO and take advantage of it.
I'll ask a question that's probably dumb, but is that because I don't know the development market? But is it too late to redirect that space to something that is, perhaps, has some more, a little bit higher commercial possibilities?
I don't, I don't think it's too late. I think it's like everything else. I think it's, some of these things are kinda like a Rubik's Cube. You spin them around and they, the picture changes, depending on the use and the, and the level of what, look, the, the retail world is changing every day. You know, Amazon and all these home delivery services are changing the face of retail. Lots of retail that we own in office buildings, for instance, WeWork space, working from home, all these things are a changing environment. But I think that everything has to be looked at, again, as the world has changed and, and the, the economy evolves into where we are today.
Okay, so in other words, is medical any worse off than any other segment commercially?
Personally, I don't think it's any worse off, but it's definitely under pressure.
Okay, all right. So there, it's all a crapshoot, then?
It's a bit of a crapshoot. And again, the, the medical building, maybe at the end of the day, maybe that becomes some combination of retail and medical.
Yeah.
With, you know, something like that, where some portion of it, again, to service the residential that's there and the medical, maybe it is a little bit of retail. So it's a true mixed-use kind of a property. And there may be more, again, you have more to offer, so that it becomes a bit of a menu, where you've got the residential, the commerce, the, the medical office and some retail, is a possibility.
Okay, all right.
Did you say the, the commercial was only one-story?
That's a two-story.
It's a two-story, yeah.
So that, that's just under twenty-one thousand square feet?
Correct.
Okay.
Matt, could I just speak in regards to some of the discussion on TOD? For example, if you're talking about taking that commercial building out there now, medical building there, using the premise of the, the commercial component receiving a hundred percent of the abatement, you're talking about, even in the TOD zone, you're just using basic numbers, the footprint of the building is ten thousand square feet. Say they came in with a redesign, a redesign of doing two or three stories of residential on top of that ten thousand square foot footprint. You're talking about receiving a third, I would say roughly a third tax abatement for that building. In the TOD zone, you would have commercial on the first floor. But again, even in the TOD zone, under the zoning regulations, it's a minimum of twenty-five feet. So therefore, it's not, you have a box, you have ten thousand, a footprint of ten thousand square feet. As long as twenty-five feet in, you have, let's say, nook and cranny cafes, things along noseline, the rest of the building is gonna be residential. So there's, in that instance, there's a chance that you're not even gonna meet the third, the third, the third, 'cause in the beginning, I was thinking the first floor would be tax abatement, second and third floor, no tax abatement. That's being consistent according to the ordinance now, right?
Or an equal amount of residential to the fourth.
Okay.
Yeah.
An equal amount of residential to the commercial, but the equal amount...
That's what I think, yeah.
Right. So a floor wouldn't be covered under the tax abatement, right?
Right.
Just breaking it down easy, easy.
As an example, yes.
Okay. And then the tax abatement difference between the commercial is different from the commercial and the residential. Residential doesn't get the full boat.
Right.
Okay. Commercial is the only thing that gets a full boat.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Well, I'm, I, I hear your, your concern. I, I understand your, the predicament that you're facing economically. I don't think, this is, just for the record, this is the very first application that has flown, flowed through EDC and then up to us. And, you know, I've discussed it with Janice and Mike and Beth at length. And I, I understand that the, the purpose of including mixed use in there was, you know, as, as was described, was generally to, to capture one footprint. So where you have commercial on the bottom and residential on the top. I, it seems to me, and the town attorney can disagree with me if he thinks I'm wrong, it seems to me we're, we're actually stretching the ordinance to the limit by taking a separate building and saying, all right, we're going to apply the same twenty-one, almost twenty-one thousand square feet to that amount of residential, which I think is appropriate in this case. It is an interpretation, but I, I don't, I don't believe we have the authority to step beyond that. And I, and I understand that, you know, this may or may not work for you. I certainly hope it does. But I think we're, we're bound by the, by the terms that we have to deal with at the moment. Do you disagree, Marty?
I'm not sure I fully understand. You're talking about all the residential development? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, the, the original, the way the ordinance is structured is that it applies to commercial. And to Mike's point in his preamble, that, that was the reason we did it. But they also, we also, you know, when, and this was under development by EDC for two years, I think, before it came to us for a final approval. They included mixed use...
Right.
For the purpose of still having, still allowing that abatement. For example, with the other building that's, that's going up on the corner, it's gonna be commercial downstairs and residential upstairs, I believe, right?
No, it's all commercial.
Oh, they switched then? It's all commercial?
Yes.
Okay. So what, what I'm saying is, I, I think we have to stick within that parameter. So you have, you have a commercial building standalone, then you have residential that's standalone that's much larger. So what the EDC is recommending is that we apply the, because of the mixed-use application, they're applying an equal amount of square footage to the residential, but not to all the residential.
Right.
And I, so I, I believe that that's still, that's within the spirit of the ordinance, is it not?
Yeah, I think it is. I think there's a lot of latitude. I mean, they're requesting, they requested seven years, a hundred percent.
Yeah.
You could give them less than seven years, or give them twenty percent. So I mean, you know, you've got the latitude to deal with that. You know, the other alternative would be to amend it. I don't think anybody wants to amend the ordinance at this point in time.
Well, actually, we're, we're kinda getting ahead ourselves, just, you know, to make sure this is a proper discussion. I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve the recommendation from Economic Development as submitted.
Second.
Okay. All right, so floor is open for further discussion. Paul and Rich?
All right, so the, my understanding, the commercial building would have to be a hundred percent, you have to have a CVO. The whole property has to be completely, CVO of the whole property. The whole, the residential and the commercial? Yes, correct. Then, then the clock starts on the seven years. Okay.
So if the, if the commercial is CO'd first, because that, then you could start the abatement on that right away.
Well, right now, the, the way we have it is that the residential and commercial have to be completed with CO in order for the abatement, 'cause it does cover, the deferment covers both the commercial and the residential piece. So those are tied together...
Of that building.
For that, correct. So, so it's, we're looking at it as one property, one project. When the CO is completed, the seven-year clock starts.
What's that?
You could have a commercial, you're gonna have to get more involved with the definition of a CO. A building could sit there like the ones in Newtown that aren't fit up. Those buildings, you know, that building is not CO'd until it is fully occupied, built to, and, and somebody's in there. I'm, I'm not disagreeing with the formula that EDC has come up with, because I, I do understand it's, it's your formula, and you're gonna be consistent with everybody that comes in the door according to your formula. But I think you're putting a lot of responsibility on zoning and building to determine when a project is CO'd. It could be, for example, the summit up on, I'm gonna use that as an example. The summit is not CO'd. It's not a CO'd project. It's not totally complete. Bethel Reservoir was fifteen years. Bethel Meadows Down and Reservoir Street was fifteen years before that was completed. Am I correct, Marty?
Yes.
Yeah, that's gonna be a real challenging aspect for financing, 'cause I, lenders have been difficult to begin with, and trying to explain that to them where they can't figure out how to factor in the abatement, I think is, really isn't, doesn't work. And honestly, I think that we're, it's a little bit short-sighted, just in general, to think that the commercial needs people. So first, we need the people to drive the, help drive the commercial. So to think that we're gonna CO all this at the same time, when we don't have enough people living right there in that Route Six corridor, I think is just a little bit backwards, honestly. It's interesting that, and I'm not saying we have it right in New Jersey, but in New Jersey, almost every residential project is abated for taxes now. There's very few that get done that aren't done that way. And most of them are thirty-year abatements, up to thirty years, with a percent of the gross revenue. And the reason is that planners have figured out that the residential, it's the people that are driving the commercial. Without the people, the commercial just goes away or it goes somewhere else. So again, we like that. That's one of the reasons we bought this property, because it had the mixed use, and we kinda specialize in that as a company with master planned communities all over the place. We like that combination. Actually have a building that's similar to what's being discussed, that we built in Union County, New Jersey, which is a sixteen thousand square foot footprint and two floors of residential above it. Happens to be all retail on the ground floor, but it's, it's a true mixed-use building like that, with actually underground parking and so on. But it works really well, because the residents can take advantage of the retail and the services that are there, and you can work from home and have those services right there. So I think they do go hand and glove, but here, we've kind of excised them from one another. They're completely independent. They're separate lots. The way that they sit, they're really kind of located generally together, but they're really not, you know, you know, dovetailed to, to one another. But yet, we're tying the abatement together, and it's really is not, it's kinda apples and automobiles in some way.
The understanding is, are they two separate lots?
No, they're not.
They're one lot.
Yeah, I'm sorry. They're one lot, but they're, they're, they're separate from each other on that lot.
Everyone is so used to the TOD. We spend so much time on the TOD zone and things like that. So when you visualize mixed use, it's first floor, commercial, and second, third floor, residential. But Route Six also has a mixed-use zone, but it's different criteria. Commercial has to be in the front, residential has to be in the back.
Right.
Yeah, according to EDC's recommendation, they gave three years for the project to be complete. But at that time, Marty, correct me if I'm wrong, if there's a reason that that needs to be extended, they could go back to planning and zoning and request an extension on that.
Well, I think you could, you could go back, but once you start building it, you're gonna have a problem.
Correct.
Once the shovel is in the ground, so to speak, you're gonna have, you're still gonna be limited to the time. But I, let's just back up a little bit here. I think there's enough leeway in, in, in the ordinance that's here, that something could be worked out, because you're basically gonna have one building that's gonna be commercial. because you're basically going to have one building that's going to be commercial, and the rest are all residential, correct?
That's correct.
Well, I, I don't see any reason why you can't work it out that if you get a CO, again, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this with the assessor. If you get a CO for the, for the commercial building, that's going to be a separate bill almost, to a certain extent, all right? And the reason why I'm saying that is because, and this is where an issue may come up, is that the rest of the buildings, I assume you're going to sell the condo units, as condo units.
Or they're rentals. We're going to own them all.
So then what you could do is, I don't see why you couldn't come to an agreement that as each building is complete, you get a CO for the building, then that full amount of taxes gets kicked in at that point in time. So instead of doing one unit at a time, maybe one building at a time. That way, it gives you a longer time period, and like I said, I think you've got enough flexibility to do that. Makes it a little harder for the assessor, but, but I think it could be done.
Yeah, I even thought about the, we, we thought about that a little bit, because the mechanics of whatever program is put in place short of a full abatement is going to be a little bit challenging to track and figure out how it all plays out. For instance, if we're trying to tie in 20,900 square feet of residential, I don't have a 20,900 square foot building. So are we only doing some part of a building that's got one CO that's residential? Or is it easier to at least say, this building, or a overall percentage of the total, is tax abated? So that you get to the same economic value, and it's just a percentage of the total, as opposed to, again, it's a conversion from some square footage to a number, because I don't see how you track it otherwise, or really try to.
If I, let me, just a couple of things. One is, I understand, and not that many years ago, you started this project based upon no deferment. The financial model that you had at the time changed.
Absolutely did.
And five years from now, the financial model could change again.
It could.
We're sitting here as a small town, and the intent is to drive commercial business. So I would sit here and say, under no circumstance would we approve any deferment that did not have a commercial CO. Otherwise, there's no purpose for the ordinance.
Well, yeah, that's what Marty said, is to do that, pull that out.
So, to me, how do we ensure that we get a commercial building? And a plan, correct, and a plan for the project that is submitted, that we could, if we wanted to, being that commercial is our drive, we could recommend commercial only, no residential. Or what we have recommended was to give an opportunity for, kind of as Matt said, where we're bending the ordinance to recognize the contribution that, and the investment you have on the residential side, as a, as a incentive to ensure that we get the commercial. Because that's what, what's, is driving.
That's the driving force.
So my recommendation is to stick with what we currently have. And for you, if you want to revise your application for us to bring something back to the Board of Selectmen through EDC, we can take a look at it. But right now, I think, and I'm hearing a couple of things. I'm hearing that even if we approve as it is now, which there's a motion on the floor to approve as is, in your eyes, that's not going to do it.
It's going to be, until, until we have a lender that says.
Right.
Yeah.
So right now, the financial model, even with what we're offering you, will not do it.
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to, I didn't say that.
Okay, all right.
There are lenders looking at this project right now. One of your most prominent local lenders has it on their table right now.
Okay.
And they're waiting for the outcome of this meeting.
They're waiting for the outcome and see what happens.
Yeah, I spoke to them this morning, so.
So if you.
I don't know if this will do it, it's their call.
Okay, it's right, all right. So you're at the mercy of, we're all at the mercy of somebody else.
We are, we are. For me, it's my wife, by the way.
So.
Just keep in mind, we're on video.
Yeah.
Don't say anything that's going to come back to you later.
Exactly.
So as we sit here right now, I know you can appreciate.
I do.
The town like ourselves.
I do.
That this is, it's so new, this is our first conversation with it. I realize the challenges, the reality for us is that we want the commercial structure built, and in whatever semblance that you could come up with, getting the residential built, you know, keeping in mind that it's that 20,900, I realize that might be, you know, splitting one apartment down the. It's actually Izzy's, Izzy's doing, Izzy's doing a heavy lifting.
Two buildings or whatever.
Right. Izzy's doing a heavy lifting, really, because she's the one that is actually doing the assessing and has come up with these numbers as we have them, which are all subject to change. But I, for now, if, like I said, you have to see what can work. And this is new for us, and I think this is, right now, probably at the moment, the best we can offer. And if you want to revise an application to submit something back in, we can certainly take a look at that.
We should.
Who, who's authority is it that, you, you said it had to be 100% complete? Is it the TOD ordinance planning and zone?
That's, that, and we, you know.
Can we monetize that?
I didn't see that. Did you see it in the ordinance?
Well, here's what I would suggest.
I didn't see that either.
We could wind up talking all night. My suggestion is we approve this application as is. Nick, let's see what the magic lenders say, you know, maybe things are getting better.
It might.
And then, and then to Marty's point, if, if, if it is within our authority to sign an MOU, and, and, you know, say, okay, we can, we can start the abatement when the commercial's done, and then you can move on to the residential, and then, you know, when it's partially done, we, we can really negotiate anything at that point.
Go back and look at it.
Yeah, but I think that's.
That's what I'm suggesting.
If you don't do this.
You could resubmit an application.
Right, that's right.
If it's not going to work for you, and see if it's within the parameters of what we're trying to do.
Again, I, I don't want to seem like we're not grateful, because we are.
No, no, not at all.
We really are. We, you have to remember, we shut the project down long before you put the ordinance in place. I don't even think it was being discussed at the time. So for us, the project didn't work. For us, this is, this is a, an energizer to maybe really be able to bring it back and, and put it back on track.
We hope it is. That's the point, that's the point of partnership with the town.
And, and absolutely, and so do we. Nobody's more motivated than we are to bring it back, and I, I hope this does it, but I'm just not sure.
Okay. Well, listen, I, so again, my recommendation is we approve this application, and then I just want to state, we're perfectly willing to, you know, look and see what we can do within the limits of the ordinance to help out. Because, you know, this is brand new ordinance, you know.
This is your.
We need to get our bugs out of the.
Yeah, no, I understand, believe me, I do.
I didn't realize that there were developments out there that were 15 years old that were still waiting for a CO. I suppose that's a conversation for another meeting, so we'll have to tackle that one separately, so, yeah.
Let me ask the gentleman here, we sit also on the Public Utilities Commission.
Okay.
That's real, plus there's two other gentlemen. This is going to be a rental?
It's a rental.
As apartments?
As apartments.
Well, we ought to tell you in advance that it can never be, I don't know, how are you going to set up sewage and water? But it can never be converted to, if it's a rental, to condos.
Mm-hmm. It's fine with us. We're, we're long-term rental owners. We own thousands of apartments, we have no desire to.
That was all, excuse me, Paul, that was all taken care of through the approval process?
Well, they understand that.
Sewer and the waters.
Separate, separate sewage.
Working very well with Kelly and.
As we've had instances where.
That's aquarium.
Yeah, no.
It's aquarium.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the sewage is ours, so.
Yeah.
The sewer, yeah.
Yeah, no, we're good with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just one more thing, just don't forget that this is just the first step, approval by you. The next step is you have to enter into an agreement.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, we could work through the agreement, but I'm going to tell you right now, if this doesn't work with your lender, I'm not doing an agreement.
Right.
Not going to go through.
No sense, save the trees.
Okay.
Right.
Just off, offhand, do you know the size of your residential units? How many square feet each building is?
Uh, well, the total of, it's 117,000 square feet, I think roughly, so from what I remember.
They're like 7 to 1,100, I think, per unit, different units.
The average size, yeah.
Yeah.
1,100?
Uh, 7 to 11, around in there.
7 to 11, one, one to better.
One to two, yes.
Okay.
And, and they vary from like six units per building, or is it, they all the same?
They're larger than that, they're in the 12 units and kind of building. And there's garages also, there's separate garages, but, you know, buildings with garages.
Roughly, you need two buildings to be built.
Something like, I think Izzy, did you figure 20 and some?
That's why I got that, you know, I matched, tried to match that sketch that we had.
It was 22 or 26 apartments or something?
There's.
Well, if you're looking at the 20,000.
It was 25 and a half, so I went 25 to 26 units.
Right, it was 26 units that Izzy figured, because I think they were an average of like 812 square feet.
I went about a hundred, yeah, 812 by 90.
So she was going by apartments to try to gross it up to 20,900 square feet approximately.
Right, yeah.
Correct.
Izzy knows more than me at this point. I said, you know more than me about the square footage there at this point.
I know the square footage.
I know you do.
And by the way, everybody's worked hard on this. I don't want to, you know, again, this has been going on, I think, Janice, we started in January or something. There was a couple of meetings that got, it's been a lot of conversation. Everybody's been great, we've been supplying lots of information. I realize we're at the front end of putting this together, so it's a little bit challenging, but I do want to.
I believe, we want to work with you also.
And we appreciate that.
Because we get the calls to decide what's going on up there.
It's pretty ugly right now, but.
And all I can do is, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, just so you're aware of it, is this spring, I've already spoken to the property owner, and has told him that the project is going to remain not, not developed, that he's going to go in there and he's going to hydro seed the whole thing, and there will be grass grow. That's all I can do at this point, because it is an act of, project building permits have been issued for the rear.
Does, technically, he's started on his five-year commitment to complete the building? Because he's already started, the building permit.
I'm talking, I'm talking about site plan. Site plan, and I always look at, I'm sorry, Marty. The site plan is a very, very gray area. When you go to the statutes, considering when the shovel, you know, I don't want to get into the technicality of it. Building permits are good for a year, that's all I know, that's not me. My zoning permits, no, there isn't any timetable that those have to be addressed. A site plan is different, it's, it falls under different rules. As far as when the shovel went in the ground, I can't remember, I know we gave them a date. And in five years, we revisit it. I have to check with council to see if they've done enough to preclude them.
Right, but basically, his meter is running.
You have to remember, it's running, but so are other meters, excuse me?
I said not in terms of.
Not in terms of you.
Of that, right, no, this is.
We're talking about definitely here.
Do we, do we know when the meter actually starts running on the three years? Because Janice, you said when construction starts, but technically, it's already started.
Right, I would say when you're new construction.
When it starts again, is that kind of what we're thinking about?
Yeah, I would think so.
Huh? Okay. Yeah. I didn't want to have lost a year of the three years already.
Yeah, we got three years. How much can you do by June 4th?
Right, I was going to say, I'm going to leave here and start digging on the way.
We're dealing with three different start dates, building department, zoning department, and now we do site.
Can we pick the one we like the best?
Sure, go for it.
Multiple choice.
I'm not offended.
All right.
Okay, so do we have any, any other questions? Okay, so a motion on the floor to approve is recommended. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So let's, let's see where it goes.
Thank you.
We're, we're willing to do as much as we possibly can until.
I need to stop.
And you'll be in correspondence with Marty.
Absol- absolutely, yeah, we've had a lot of correspondence.
You'll keep us apprised.
And thank you to the board and to the EDC and Janice and everybody for the efforts to date, I appreciate it.
Good luck, we really, we're pulling, we're trying to do our part.
And I appreciate that, and hopefully, we get there.
We want to see.
We get there together.
All right. Okay, so we, we got a couple of other big things to do, gentlemen, thank you very much. We got one other thing we got to do before we get to IQC, I got it right this time. So there's a second recommendation from EDC.
I have, I'm just.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, good night, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.
Good luck.
Thank you.
There's a second recommendation, this is for Mr. Conlon, who's with us tonight, thank you for being here, to resurrect bicycle racing in Francis J. Clark Business Park. This would be from May 21st to August 6th. There is a very detailed agreement, or set of conditions, that EDC has put forth in, in, in the recommendation to allow bike racing. Now I'll turn the floor over to Mike, and Mike and Mike, whoever wants to go first. If you want to give us a brief outline of.
I mean, very briefly, and I'll really turn it to Janice, because I like how things trickle down, all right?
Or up.
Or up, in this case, up. But no, EDC, that, you, Board of Selectmen had asked us to take a look at it, because of the park, and we've taken a look, and Janice has surveyed a number of the businesses in the park. And what you're seeing is some of it that came back from the survey. Most specifically, area of concern was on the insurance side, which we've also checked with our town broker on the insurance side, in terms of what the conditions. From what I understand, Mike is verbally agreed to all of the conditions that are listed here. Janice will confirm the conditions before the races. And we see, we think it's great for the community, and it's fine for the park, in terms of when they're looking to do with it, and the rules and the conditions that we have here, we felt very comfortable making the recommendation to move forward. And Janice can give you more specifics than my very brief general overview.
Basically, what Mike's looking to do is have a summer bike series from May 21st to August 6th, on Tuesday evenings.
Tuesdays?
Tuesday evenings from 6 o'clock to approximately 8:30. The conditions that we have laid out were conditions that the Board of Selectmen had approved, I think, two or three years ago, for Clark Business Park. And what we added on there were the insurance requirements that we had spoke to our insurance representative of. Mike works his events through a, I'm guessing they're a national.
National governing body.
So they have, already have contracts, they have agreements for volunteers, as well as the bicyclists to sign. And in addition to that, the town, which I've already drafted, would be an agreement between Mike and ourselves that would cover the town as well. So those are all attached to, to the information that you should have received. What I will do is work with Mike to make sure that all of those requirements are met before the races, and that all of the requirements or conditions that we have outlined have been, have been taken care of by Mr. Conlon as well.
Mike, is this going to be sanctioned, USCF, or is this a training series?
No, USCF does not exist any longer, it's now called USA Cycling.
USA Cycling?
Changed a few years ago, but yes, it would be sanctioned by them, it would have a permit number.
That would be about the time I aged out and stopped racing, because I don't want to break any more bones, so, okay. USA Cycling.
Yeah, and, you know, the, I would go through USA Cycling for the permit, and that also gets all the insurance coverage for it.
Okay. The riders would have to be, have a USAC license then?
Every single rider has to have a USA Cycling license. They also have, all have to sign a waiver release form, even before they were to toe the line, so to speak.
Okay.
Even the volunteers have to sign a volunteer waiver. You know, and myself being a, I, I promoted the race here about 25 years ago, through, through Bethel Cycle for two or three years. And then I did the summer series here 20 years ago, in the same park. And then I've also had been the referee, the chief referee, for all the spring series races from, I think, 1994 right up until, I think, 2015. And being the chief referee, it's my responsibility to make sure that all the paperwork and all of the waivers are all signed and everything, so. So, extremely familiar with that whole process.
So, and I, I see you, Bethel Police Department will do the, the usual thing, per their, their stated policy, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, so you'll hire Bethel police officers?
Yep.
Okay. Well, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve the, uh, summer bike series, uh, as recommended by EDC.
Thank you.
Okay.
Discussion?
Yeah, discussion.
Um, just two, two little questions. Uh, what about the trampoline center, is that, uh, they're open at night?
Skyzone.
Skyzone, right?
Yep.
Uh, does that race, is it in front of their building, or?
It'll go, you know, it'll be, the race will be what is called, uh, yellow line rule, which means that riders have to stay to the right-hand side of the yellow line, uh, on the course. They do not have access to the whole road. They only have that one side of the road. So, access to and from the, uh, Skyzone Park will be available to them. And that's the same with, same way with all the, all businesses there.
That's the only one that I know of that's really has activity.
Well, I, I think there's also the, uh, uh, the gym that's now there also, in the same area.
There's a gymnastic, there's workspace academy too.
Workspace academy.
And the other, my other question is, is item number ten, any dirt cleared from the roads will be removed from the site, who's doing that?
Well, I, that, I think that was put in during the spring series.
It was, it should be.
Because what they were doing is, uh, the promoter of the old spring series would sit there and clean up the road. He would actually gather up or reclimate all the salt and sand that was put down on the road. And he would put it into five-gallon buckets, and then he would take it off-site to either, um, you know, another town dump or, you know, take it back to, you know, the town of Bethel, so they could sit there and just reclaim it. You know, he, he did it as a service to sit there, make the road nice and clean for riders.
Well, actually, we do, but, um, you, Mike is right, that, that was back when they used to start the winter, the spring series in early March and our.
Before they swept.
Before they swept the road, and naturally, Public Works has already swept it, that's the first one, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't be an issue. All right, any other questions?
No.
All right, yes?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I'm not sure, I think there's a word missing in number twelve. Says event coordinator will have participants or volunteers sign and provide proof that the Board of Selectmen Director had economic development prior to be, provide proof assigned what, I take, I assume that was supposed to be the waiver.
I think, yeah, that's the waiver, that would be the waiver, and, you know, the.
Where do you have your waiver from? I'd like to see that.
USA Cycling.
Okay. Because our, our, if I remember, a couple of months ago, or a month ago, our insurance carriers said they had copies that we could use too, so I'd like to take that. The other thing is, uh, to be honest with you, I've never done a use contract for something like this. Um, and I know that a lot of insurance companies will not allow you to name other parties as additional insured, unless you have an agreement that says it's a requirement. So, I don't, have you done this before, and have another contract with somebody that?
Well, as far as getting, having, uh, like the town of Bethel or the EDC put onto, uh, onto the insurance, yeah, that, I mean, when you fill out the permit, you're asked who is exempt from, uh, or who you want to put onto the insurance. So, you know, I sit there and will write down a list of the businesses, the town of Bethel, the Public Works, everybody involved in it. And put it on the, uh.
The, the problem is, a lot of them, it's one thing to get a certificate that just says the town of Bethel's a certificate holder. It's another thing to get a certificate that says the town of Bethel's name is an additional insured.
Yes.
And, and nine times out of ten, the insurance companies automatically print on there, provided that there's an agreement between the parties that calls for this. That's why I'm asking about, you know, have you signed an agreement with anybody else yet? You know, I'd like to see the agreement, I mean, I've never done one before, I'd like to have a rough idea of what I'm doing.
Marty, should I add to my motion, the line at the end to say subject to final review?
Yeah, you can do that. I'm just saying, I'm trying to get a jump on this, that's all.
Marty, I have a, I have a copy of all the coverage and insurance documents. I also have a copy of the draft, um, facility use agreement, our insurance carrier, and then all their, their language. So you can take that.
That's what I was wanting to give you.
Yeah, thank you.
That's good, thank you very much.
All right, okay, so we'll, we'll take care of that, anything else?
No.
Okay, any other problem?
No.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the right bike race recommendation with the provision that the town attorney has a final review. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So, thank you, I'm glad to see you come back, I had a lot of people say they miss Bethel, they like coming to the restaurants, and that's why EDC's involved in the first place.
You have no idea. And I'm being serious about that, there is, there has been a groundswell of people trying to get back into Bethel for the bike race series. How many people?
Oof.
Roughly, how many people? Uh, I would say there's probably about a good five hundred.
Wow.
Individual bike racers from New York City, New Jersey, Upper New York State, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island. Not, not everyone would be here for this, I've put limits on it, and this is just the local, because at the same time, there is another bike race series that happens up in, uh, the Manchester area on the same night and the exact same time.
But you have Tuesday nights, right?
Yeah, it would be Tuesday nights.
Janice, just advise the chamber of this.
Well, part of the agreement would be, he would have to notify all the businesses, so I'll work with him to identify those businesses.
I, I, I'm gonna start a pool, and how many guys in Spandex are gonna be over at Ruff's signature?
Paul, I don't think you meant for Janice to notify the businesses in the park, you talked about notifying the chamber. So the local businesses can expect the crowd to be.
Right.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying, yes, yes.
All right, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we gotta move on, and I apologize, I had no idea we had such a long agenda.
It's okay.
We had a lot of things that required discussion. Uh, you can introduce yourself, please?
Yep, uh, my name is Jay Duhamel with the Gordian Group. Do you want to up here, or do you want me to just follow with what you have in your packets?
Uh, with this, with this packet?
Yes, sir.
Um, you can, you can just follow.
Okay.
And while we're getting ready, Doug Arndt is here, who's Director of DPW, of course. Um, the reason I wanted this gentleman to come in here is that, um, as you guys are aware, we have an issue with our dog, our animal control facility. Um, we are under a mandate from the state to fix it up, we're very close to being sanctioned and fined if we do not. Um, we're trying to find the most economical way to do this. Uh, it's been suggested that we just start over and build a new one. The new regulations are so onerous that we really could not, I, I talked to several suppliers on this. We couldn't build a new one for less than half a million dollars, which, because under the new regs, you need all kinds of things in there. You need a separate hotel for the dogs versus the cats, there's quarantine areas. Um, but we can renovate this facility for far less, and, and stay within the current regulations and have a, have a good workable facility. Now, the reason I would like this gentleman to give us an outline is that, basically, this company provides a, uh, it's essentially a design-build service. Um, it would require a bid waiver, uh, this does fall within the parameters similar to state bids, where we could legally, I believe, not go through the traditional bidding process. Um, but I just wanna make sure that my colleagues are a hundred percent comfortable with doing it this way. So, Doug, if you guys wanna take over and explain how this works, explain, let's start with, with the easy IQC.
Okay.
Because I think that's where the, that's where the conversation starts, is how can we, how can we do this and comply with our charter requirements?
So, um, the Gordian Group is a, um, a software company that provides procurement solutions for towns, cities, universities, K through twelve, higher education across the country. Um, the process we have in Connecticut is called Easy IQ City, it's a job order contract contracting service. Um, and if any of you are in the military, you're probably familiar with job order contracting. Um, the founder of our company started job order contracting in the military in the mid-eighties, and when he got out of the military, he started the Gordian Group. Um, so, I program history in Connecticut. Um, Capital Region Council Governments, which is a statewide co-op that the town of Bethel is a member of, um, approached us in two thousand and seven to get contracts in the state of Connecticut for job order contracting. It took a couple of years to implement it, in two thousand and nine, we started in Connecticut. Um, our first year in Connecticut, we did about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of construction volume. Last year, we did over twelve million dollars in construction volume. Um, we work in fifty-two towns across the state of Connecticut. So, from our first job order in Connecticut, in the town of Bolton, to today with fifty-two towns, um, it just keeps growing and growing year after year. Um, Gordian has a contract with the Capital Region Council Governments, where we answer a public bid. So, we have, uh, we answered a request for proposal, we submitted a bid, and we have a contract with Gordian, uh, with CROG. Every two years, CROG puts out contracts across the state, they advertise on DAS website, CROG's website, and various newspapers across the state. That happens every other October, it just happened this past October. And contractors came into a meeting at CROG's office and listened to a, a presentation by the Gordian Group to discuss how job order contracting works, and to bid on the Easy IQC program. The lowest response, responsible bidder from that process, which is a sealed bid process, which satisfies towns and cities' procurement requirements, um, happened in October. The lowest responsible, responsible bidder has a contract from January first, two thousand and nineteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. They're two-year contracts, that's what CROG determined would be a legitimate time to have contracts. Most of CROG's contracts are one year long. Um, because of the nature of our contracts and the relationships we try to develop with towns and cities across the state, um, we tried to extend it longer, we came to the agreement of a two-year contract. In order to access these contracts, they have all the boilerplate specifications at the front of a typical construction contract, and that contract is held in CROG's office. At the time of bid, nobody tells the contractors that you're gonna get any amount of work. That's why it's called indefinite quantity construction. We ask them to bid on an adjustment factor on tasks in our construction task catalog. This is half of our construction task catalog, which is pricing for everything from flooring, ceiling tiles, light fixtures, windows, roofing, boilers, asbestos abatement, everything that has to do with facilities in this, in these books. Contractors bid on an adjustment factor to those, these prices in these books. Um, and there's four adjustment factors that they bid on. The reason why we call them adjustment factors is, one contractor might look at the prices in this book and say, I can do the prices in this book, and that'll cover my costs, my adjustment factors, my overhead profit, supervision, insurance, all that. Another contractor might look at the prices in this book and say, I can do things in this book for less. So they're gonna adjust their price, their overhead profit, supervision, insurance, they're gonna adjust these prices down and come up with a more competitive adjustment factor. And that's where the, uh, competitive bid process plays. That's why we call them adjustment factors, not overhead and profit. The, these are not time and material contracts. Every task in this book, I shouldn't say that there are wage rates in this book, but ninety-nine point nine percent of the tasks in this book is labor, material, and equipment to install something, labor, material, and equipment to demo something. So it might say for a two-by-two, triangular ceiling tile, five-eighths thick, mineral fiber, Armstrong, Optima ceiling tile, it's that specific. They get paid a dollar twenty-seven cents a square foot, I don't know what the number is, I'm just making that up. That's labor, materials, and equipment to bring that piece of, that tile from a truck, put it, cut it, and put it in place. They don't get paid fifty-five dollars an hour to install it, and they stand here and they, they mess around, they're, they're paid on production. So it's, it's to their incentive to get the job done as quick as possible and done right. Because if it's not done right, then they gotta come back and fix it, because the member owns the purse strings, holds the purse strings. And it is a, um, uh, it's a performance-based contract. So if they do one job for you and they fail, you don't hire them again, we don't go through the process again. If they do a great job for you and we make it easy for you, and it's effective, and it's, and it falls within your budgets, that's our goal, to make it easy for you, that's why we call it Easy IQ City. If it's easy for you, you'll keep calling us, that's why we say it's performance-based. We split the state up into four, I'm jumping all around, because I'm getting, I'm, I'm used to pointing, I'm sorry. Uh, but I'm gonna cover everything in here. Uh, we did split the state up into four regions, because we felt as though one contractor couldn't handle the whole state, and it's proven true, next time, we're probably gonna have two contractors in each region, because we are growing. We also have roads and bridge contracts, so we have general contractors and site contractors at this point.
Quick question, the general construction regions, some towns are outlined in blue, what does that say?
Yeah, that is, that's a map that I got from CROG, those are, um, members of the Capital Region Purchasing Council.
We are a member of that, though, aren't we?
Uh, I don't know if you're CRPC, I know you're a member of CROG, um, but I can, I can double-check that, I don't know. You might be.
I'm pretty sure we are.
Okay.
So, what, what does that do for us?
It lowers your, it lowers your fee to CROG, your yearly fee to CROG, Capital Region Purchasing Councils do, members do pay less. Um, so I'm gonna jump back on to this, or else I'm gonna be all over the place tonight.
Right, sorry.
I'm, I'm on the Y Easy IQC page. Um, so if you have a traditional bid project, for, like, for example, this dog pound, um, the traditional bid process, you're gonna go out, you're gonna hire an architect, you're gonna have them design the plans, then you're gonna put the plans and specs out on the street, and then you're gonna go through that bid process. We have found, analyzing construction projects, because that's what we do, um, across the country, that process can take three to six months. In the Easy IQC pro, program, if we, if we can sit down and define a scope of work, if we have the initial call from a member and say, okay, we're gonna have a meeting, define the scope of work, provide a price, develop a price proposal, review it, and provide it to the member, that usually takes two to three weeks. So if you're under a truncated timeframe, three to six months versus, uh, I'm sorry, two to three weeks versus, uh, three to six months, there's time savings. If you were to hire an architect, the staff, um, the, the cost of the architect, the, the cost of the man-hours for hiring the architect, for the staff, um, to meet, have all those meetings with the architect, um, to put the public bid on, there is also soft costs associated with those. With the Easy IQC program, we've already done the bidding process, so you don't have to, um, have those costs associated with the individual projects. Um, so there's not only time savings, but there are soft costs in the engineering and architectural fees. Most of the jobs we do are replacement in kind. If you're gonna build a brand-new police department or a new school, we're not the company for you, and we're gonna tell you that. And the reason I mention that, I live in Danbury, and I know what you're doing. Could we? Yes. Have we? We built, we built a brand-new public works facility for the town of, uh, Canton just last year. Um, that was just over three million dollars. So we can, through this program, build a brand-new building for you. I'm gonna tell you, no, it's not, it's not the best fit for you. Canton just didn't have the, um, presence of GCs in that area, and the contract we had at the time, they loved working with Millennium Builders, so they said, we wanna go through it, uh, through with them. Uh, if you were gonna renovate boys' locker rooms, if you were gonna renovate, um, replace windows in town hall, if you were gonna replace a roof in your senior center, or renovate your dog pound, this is a perfect program for it. Because we're gonna, we're gonna, with the price proposal, and I know you've seen the price proposals.
Yeah.
Everything has a price on it. If we were gonna renovate this room, for example, there's a price to demo a ceiling tile and put in a ceiling tile. There's a price to demo a light fixture and put in a light fixture. Price to demo a square foot of carpet and put in painting, moldings, insulation, uh, um, emergency lights, whatever the case may be. Everything has a price on it, so you're gonna see where every single penny goes. If you look directly at our cost, our price proposal, and you were to put a project on the street, the same two projects, could you get a better price on the street? I don't know, depends if it's in April, depends if it's in August, depends if it's in December, depends who bids on it. Um, depends if they have everything captured in their, in their proposal. who bids on it, depends if they have everything captured in their, in their proposal that you put out on the street. In theory, we are probably not the cheapest on the street. And the reason is, you hired an architect to develop the plans and specs. Those costs range between 9% and 19%, depending on the size of the project. The larger the project, the smaller the percentage of the architectural fees and vice versa. So a smaller project like the Dog Pound, you would probably spend in the $15,000 to $20,000 range for architectural drawings for that job, for somebody to build, develop a set of drawings, and bid specs and put it on the street. Through our program, you don't need that. So those costs go back to construction. So if I, what's our price on the Dog Pound? It's been a while, I'm sorry.
The, the one right here is like $83,000.
$83,000. So if you added, just say $17,000, it wasn't even $100,000, if you put this out on the street, your $83,000 might be a little bit less, but you would have those architectural fees over on top of it. So there's different ways to look at it. And I know people have taken our price proposals and gone out on the street and got it, and they say, "Why are we hiring you? You're more expensive." And I have to have this discussion again with them because they forget his time, your purchasing agent's time, architectural fees, and all those. They don't think about that part of it as part of the construction.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
So do you, do you actually draw, does your organization then draw plans then?
Most of the, again, most of the jobs we do are replacement in kind, so plans are not required.
So generally, what you're talking about is just renovating what's there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. Our, our average-sized job order nationwide is between $80,000 and $100,000. Last year, we did $1.7 billion across the state at $80,000 to $100,000 at a time. That's a lot of job orders across the state, and that's our sweet spot. $50,000 to $250,000, that's where we excel in. Again, the replacement in kind. If you go into a boys' or a girls' bathroom in a high school, a gang bathroom, and you have six toilets and six toilet partitions and wall tile, you go in there, you measure everything up, rip it out, put it back in, and everything's, it's very clean.
So you've got, basically, it's a guaranteed price right up front?
And you, yes, and you see where everything is. And in addition to that, some contractors, when they bid on plans and specs, they build their price, they build their estimate based on the plans and specs, and some contractors might have another list over here of things that they might get on a change order, that they know that the plans are deficient on, and then before the ink is dry on the contract, they start hammering you with change orders. Because the, our contractor, our contractors get paid from this construction task catalog the same today as they do tomorrow, what's the benefit in holding back and having that separate list? And also because it's a team environment, there's, it's not the adversarial public bid environment where, "I'm not going to show you what you have and you don't show him what you have. We're working as a team to get this project complete for you." Because they're getting the same today, paid the same today as tomorrow, why not put it all on the table right now and say, "Hey, we see this. You might not have thought about it, but why don't we put this in the price proposal?" Instead of going for a change order later, which we now have to stop construction, we have to go talk to Doug about it, we have to get approval, come back to the board, possibly get more money, let's just put it all in there up front. And it shows that you're working as a team effort. And we might say, "Hey, you missed that in our discussion of the scope of work." And Doug's like, "No, don't worry about it. Public Works might be taking care of it," or whatever. For example, in the Dog Pound, maybe, maybe the budget is over, maybe the proposal's over your budget, and you say, "You know what? The paving in that, in that price proposal, because you can see where every penny is, is $2,700. You know exactly what it is." I can't say tomorrow that it's only worth $1,500 because you have it right there to the penny where everything is. Maybe Doug says, "You know what? I can have my Public Works guys take care of that." And we've had those discussions with towns and cities across the state. We even went as far, in some towns where they have their own landfill, they provide their own dumpsters. And they say, "Well, our dumpster is $525." They say, "We can do it less than that." We're like, "That's fine. You provide us with a dumpster. We go into the price proposals and we cross it out." We've, the town of Branford has an agreement with a local rental company, and they can provide man lifts cheaper than we have in our book, just because of the agreement they have with the local company. It was like $50 cheaper on a $1,500 rental, but that was important to them. So they provided the rental, and it was, because it's that transparent, we showed them where all the dollars are.
What about unforeseen circumstances that you come across?
So there's always going to be, there's, there's, I shouldn't say there always is. If we were in this room and you said, "Jay, put a wall, put a door in this wall right here." Nobody knows if there's a pipe in that wall right now. So when we open that up and we say, "Oops, there's a pipe there," we can do one of two things. We can tell the contractor to continue to work, or we can stop. Regardless, the contractor has to come back into the book, pull the prices out of the book, in order to reroute the pipe or to move the door, either or. But it comes out of the prices of the book.
And do contractors pay prevailing wage, or?
If the project is over $100,000 remodeling or renovation, yes, they do. If it's over $1 million new construction, yes, they do. And they have a separate, the adjustment factor I mentioned before, they have four adjustment factors. Normal working hours, non-pervailing wage, Monday through Fridays, 7:00 to 4:30, whatever it is. Normal working hours prevailing wage, so if it's a larger project, and then other than normal working hours, both of them, nights, weekends, holidays. So if you say, "You've got to work at the police department, but we only want you here Saturday and Sunday," they're going to get paid a different amount because it's a premium for working weekends. So the front-end documents to satisfy your requirements, they're held at CROG's office, and it's a typical AIA contract, that the contract is held between CROG and the contractor, and we can get a copy of that for you for your review, that's no problem. And it has anything in there, the bid forms, the information for bidders, general conditions, insurance requirements, bond requirements, and if, if there's state money, we can provide Charo plans and certified payrolls for prevailing wages. In here, we put a sample solicitation, so you can see what a solicitation looks like that we put out to bid for our contractors. That'll, again, show that it's a public bid contract, and again, it satisfies your procurement Again, we didn't commit to anything on the project, on the contract for the contractors because we don't know what the members of CROG are going to be looking for. Last year, we did, last two years, we did one school each in Reading of completely new HVAC and ceilings. Each one was 2.5 and two, no, I'm sorry, 2.7 and 2.8 million, one each year. Obviously, they're not going to do that again this year because we've already accomplished that for them. We're looking at a Dog Pound in Bethel. Probably, we, I've only looked at one of the Dog Pound in five years in Connecticut, and that was in Windsor. So we don't know what's going to come up. We don't know what the numbers are, but we always respond to them. And that's why it's, again, indefinite quantity construction. Contract term is two years, as I, as I mentioned. We talked about the bid requirements with the award criteria. The execution process for an EZIQC project. So if the town of Bethel has a project that they would like done, there's a number of ways that can kick off the, the job order. Phone call, an email, or an EZIQC portal, which is just ask you a couple of questions about the job order. From that initial meeting, Gordian, the, a member of the town of Bethel and a contractor will come out to what's called a joint scope meeting. And it's at that time we discuss the scope of work. We say, "What do you, what do you need?" What, like, I always reference the room I'm sitting in. Are we going to replace the ceilings? Are we going to replace the blinds? Are we going to replace the radiators with something different? Carpet tiles instead of roll carpet? We're going to go through that whole scope of work. We're going to ask you, "When do you want the work done? Where can the dumpster go? Is a permit required?" All those questions are going to be asked, and from that, we develop what's called a detailed scope of work. And it's going to highlight everything in there. It's going to say what kind of light fixtures you want. Take out the two-by-four fluorescents and put in two-by-two LEDs. And that's going to be a paragraph or so long document that says what the scope of work is. The contractor then comes into our construction task catalog through our software and starts picking all the tasks appropriate to do the work, and then he applies quantities to those tasks. If the room is 10 by 10, it should be 100 square feet of flooring and 100 square feet of ceiling. If there's four lights in the room, the proposal better say four lights. Once he's done preparing that proposal, he sends it to me for accuracy, and I, I review it as a neutral party. I don't review it on Bethel's behalf, and I don't review it on the contractor's behalf. I review for accuracy. Does he have the right light fixtures? Did he select the correct adjustment factor? Did he select the right carpet that the town wanted? Did he put a dumpster in there to get rid of all the debris? Did he carry the permit fee if required? And once that proposal's accurate, I then forward it to Bethel. If Bethel is happy with, they review the price proposal, if they're happy with it and it's within their budget and they want to move forward, they cut a purchase order. They've satisfied their procurement requirements because it's a competitively bid project. They can see where all the dollars are going with the project. It's a completely transparent process. If there's, if you say, "You know what? Let's not do the carpet. I know I can buy the carpet off state bid through Red Thread cheaper than what you can do it for. You know what? Take the carpet out of the project and we won't do it, and you can hire it off state bid." There's, there's so many different options through this program, and because it's transparent and it's a team effort, we're all working together to provide the town with what they want. In addition, if you're hiring an architect to do it, sometimes an architect will design Taj Mahal for a public works office. We're going to listen to the people who are using the space. If it's a public works garage where the guys are going to be changing at the end of their shift, you don't need the most expensive light fixtures and the highest-end ceiling tiles, or chair rail and crown molding, you might just need vinyl base and VCT. We listen to you, we put those in the scope of work and the proposal. Because why put all that in it and it's going to be over your budget and you're going to say, "Thanks, but no thanks, we'll see you later"? We want that ongoing relationship. City of Danbury, we started working with them about three years ago, and we are now in the Board of Ed, the town, we are in Parks and Rec, we just did, finished a job for the Veterans Home. So we're all over the city of Danbury. The towns that use us and the cities that use us tend to keep using us and keep using us. We try very hard to be transparent and to provide you with the best service that we can. If Doug knows, if he calls me, and I just found out this meeting yesterday, and I told you in our first meeting, I said, "Give me 15 minutes notice and I'll be here." I live 10 minutes just on this side of Danbury, so I'm here at your, your beck and call. So service is not an issue.
So we give you 11 minutes notice next time?
That's fine.
Have time to put on your shoes.
Okay. If it's Tuesday night, I can drop my son off at Bethel Music and then come right over. So the construction task catalog, if you, there's one, there's just one little excerpt on here, it explains about a, a task in the construction task catalog. It goes into detail what the specification of the VCT is, and if you notice on the right side of the page, there's a price for install, and then way to the right, there's a price for demolition, because a lot of the work we do is replacement in kind. Then we also have modifiers. Modifiers are for quantities or for change in specifications. So if you were to call us in to do a small VCT repair, like five square feet or something like that, the contractor can get paid more per square foot. If you said, "Come in and replace all the VCT in the whole school," he's going to get paid less per square foot, and those are reflected in those for up to 25 feet add or for over 4,000 feet deduct and everything in between it. The other thing are, the modifiers are for change in specification of materials. You might have a Schedule 40 pipe, drain waste event pipe, and there might be a modifier to change it to a Schedule 30 or a Schedule 50 pipe, and those are similar modifiers. The sample proposal, again, I, I don't know if everybody in the board has seen the price proposals. They're very detailed. The Dog Pound proposal is how many pages long, Doug? The second page will say how many.
Well, you know, we're, actually, I'm going to ask Doug to come back at the next meeting with that proposal fully fleshed out. I just wanted these guys to, to get a feel for what EZIQC is.
No, I just wanted to let them know how long, I mean, a price proposal for the Dog Pound is probably 10, 11. Eight pages long, and there's probably 10 to 12 tasks per page.
What specifications as far as, have you, have you?
So we, we've actually used the EZIQC, but we did, we did it as a formal bid waiver for the lights on Whittlesey.
Yeah, right.
And that project really came off very, very nice. In fact, we had two, they came back to do more lights with our contractor. It, it's just that the, the convenience of it and the benefits to the town really necessitates not just doing bid waivers for each of these individual projects, but considering it as a legitimate construction model because it's already pre-bid, that the town really should consider adopting. Another good example of a project that, and they've done a number of quotations for, for projects, is the salt shed repairs of the highway garage, right? It's an existing building, it's got unknown, because of the way the siding of the original building coming, it's got unknown, really, degree of repairs in terms of, because of the rotting material up there. Once they take it off, they may, you know, there may be some project creep. It may not be. They gave us not only one proposal, but at least two, if not three, different approaches, meaning that, I think we talked about painting the existing siding or actually replacing the, the wood for, with a more durable man-made product that would be more durable. Might be, you know, there's some cost differentiations in here, but they've been very liberal in terms of their time and provided a lot of great project cost efficiencies and cost savings in terms of what they've, what they've, have given us in terms of value. And the example, the Dog Pound's a good example, but there's other, other projects that I just mentioned that we would consider using them, and other ones that we've asked them to, to give us a price on that we may not, you know, go, go this direction because of other, other different dynamics.
If you look towards the end of the, the end of the package, it also says some good uses for the EZIQC, some sample projects we've done, and then the last page shows the towns.
You've got a member, yeah, you've got a member list, too.
Yep.
I mean, a customer.
The page right before that shows some examples of projects.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
So you have a list of pre-qualified contractors that you?
So we have, for Bethel, we have two contractors, one roads and bridges and one GC for the next two years. The GC for this area is Millennium Builders and the roads and bridge contractors, BNP Construction.
And where are they out of?
Millennium Builders is out of Rocky Hill, and BNP Construction is out of Danbury, right across from the Board of Ed.
Now, say the contractor out of Rocky Hill, does he hire local people to work?
That's one of the benefits of our program is because the contractors have a larger area to cover, a quarter of the state, they have to hire local contractors. They can't use the guys that are in Rocky Hill. They, they, they really have to tap into the local, the local people. We also ask at our joint scope meetings with the member, whether it be Bethel or Danbury or Hamden or Gramby, is there somebody you want us to use? For example, you might use Lucido Electric for all of your buildings, for maintenance for electrical. Why wouldn't we use Lucido? You know, if you said, "Acting plumbing."
And Lucido has to rely on your bid spec book?
He, yes and no. So what happens is the, the GC is the one who has to abide by the, the book, all right? So.
So he's got to go out and shop for his contractor.
He's got to find somebody who'll go in here, or be close, because maybe he's more efficient on painting, but less, he can't buy electrical out as good. So he might take a hit on a couple of the electrical items, but he might make more money on the painting. And those are probably not two good examples, but you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Because painters make the same as electricians, right?
Some do.
That's true.
And I would say this, I mean, I don't think in no way, and how are we looking to use this contract for every project? We're very committed to, you know, utilizing local, or local expertise that are in Bethel and will continue to do so. But again, like the salt shed is an excellent example. I had three local contractors bid on it, give me quotations, and because of what they saw, it was all apples, oranges, and bananas. It was all over the place, and it was not until Jay came in with a very detailed, "Hey, this is what we're going to do," you know, it became a very detailed bid specification. So the salt shed is, is an excellent example. There's other projects like the, the underground storage, the washwater tank at Public Works Garage. You know, we may, we may decide to find some other, other vendors in, in town that have expertise in excavation, but through other projects in town, it's been a real point of frustration, some of the turn time, and whether it's from the architectural services or from other general contractors, the word, the word, not just the word, but experience on all levels of construction right now, is that everything is taking so long to get contractors consultants. I'm working with a structural engineer that just, I can't get people to come to our, to our aid to look at something, particularly on an urgent basis, because every, what's happening? Because every, what's happening, they're not hiring people, they're keeping their backlog at 120, 150 percent to avoid ester on the economy. And what that does is just slows our timelines down. Whereas this mechanism, if we need to get something like the Dog Pound because of other other driving factors done in a quick fashion, it really is the best design-build solution that we can get a project scope together, a bid and a contractor here in the shortest time span.
This by no means replaces your other procurement methods. It's just another tool in your procurement toolbox. You still have your state bids, your traditional bid, your design bid build, all that. It's just, and this doesn't fit every single project, as Doug just said. And, and I've gone on meetings with clients and they've asked me to look at something and I, timeout, put this one out to bid. That would be your best value. And they look at me like I'm crazy and I do the Macy's and Gibbles things, but it's the right thing to do for the member. I don't look at that project, I look at the relationship.
Well, what I would like to do is have you bring the full Dog Pound proposal to us at our next meeting. In fact, get it to us ahead of time so these guys have a chance to look at the entire proposal. And I know that there's no engineering drawings, but do you have a diagram that shows basically what, what the proposal is?
Yeah, in all fairness, I mean, one of the strengths of this, so we, Jay's giving us the town $80,000 for a number of things and I am working on different, some different cost cutting savings approaches on this, so, but we can use this as a discussion point and, you know, look to move forward just because this is of a level of urgency on it.
But that, I would like to also, I don't know if you've already done it, talk to Chris, our building inspector, to see, you know, if he required drawings or anything on a project like this.
Well, part of, part of the, part of the process, and Jay, you can, you can go in and so when they're required to get the, get the building permit and actually come up with at least rudimentary drawings or a level of complexity in terms of the Dog Pound, it's a combination of site plans that are being developed by.
Yeah, is that included in this price now?
The site plans were not included in that $83,000. But we were, we were trying to do a solution where we did, we were not changing the site plan. The Sallyport for the Dog Pound, we're trying to do it as a, it's going to be on blacktop and it's going to be a.
Cardboard?
Cardboard, thank you. I couldn't think of the right word.
But you've got to do structural fittings for the cardboard and all that?
They're, we looked at two different options and I don't remember which one Doug's looked at because we've looked at so many options. The two, last two we looked at were sitting on sonotubes and the other one was just strap downs in, through the blacktop with screw jacks.
You're in a swap over there.
Well, and that's why we're afraid to put fittings in.
The detail beyond the contract mechanism, which is the purpose of our meeting tonight, is that the Dog Pound, because of siding issues, really is on a very, it's on a short-lived.
That's part steel, isn't it?
Excuse me?
That's steel.
The front building, the back building is block.
The site, the building itself does have structural issues, not that they're urgent, but the building itself has got a five to 10 year lifespan left to it.
The steel?
Not the steel, the foundation, it is settling back there. So the whole, getting a snapshot of the project is everything that we're presenting, the costs are being brought down because things that we're doing are really only meant to last five to 10 years unless we, you know, collectively decide to do something different. The original proposal that I had put forward was developed by Jay, EZIQC, was a $210,000 for a building that really needed, you know, would have fallen short on meeting, bringing it up to, up to current standard. So our approach now is to really just do a bare, bare minimum, get us through until we can look back at the big picture.
Basically get us out of trouble with the state.
And look at potentially location.
Originally, I think we had a crematory.
Yeah, there was. It was a crematory.
We still have it.
No.
Oh, yeah, back in the old days, yes, yeah. But yeah, the, the back masonry building is structurally unfit.
Yeah.
The Sallyport.
That has to go down.
And that's part of it.
So, I'm sorry, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, though, I guess the, the one thing that, although we can get on each of these individual projects, the real, I think the real purpose of Jay's intent of being here is to see if the town would consider adopting this as, like we do with our other contract, contracts, as a legitimate contract mechanism that effectively would adopt it and would give project by project discretion to me or the comptroller to be able to elect to use a EZIQC bid over $50,000 as a legitimate construction bid.
I don't think we can get around the charter requirement, but that's okay.
That's okay. That's why we're here to discuss and.
We can, we can still use the mechanism that already exists. I, I just wanted these guys to have a clear understanding of how this works and to make sure they were comfortable with it.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so do you guys have any other questions?
Nope.
All right, so we'll put you on the next agenda, two weeks from tonight. And thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity, appreciate it.
You've got a long ways to go.
Unfortunately, tonight I do. But it's all right.
All right, so I'm just going to finish the bottom of the agenda and we'll go back up in approved minutes and so on. So moving on to item number 10, adoption, the annual adoption of the Town of Bethel Fair Housing Resolution. Let me read this into the record. Whereas all persons are afforded the right to full and equal housing opportunity in the neighborhood of their, the neighborhood of their choice. Whereas federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familial status or national origin, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And whereas Connecticut Fair Housing Laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation or gender identity or expression, be given equal access to all housing-related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And whereas the Town of Bethel is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative action, affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town of Bethel hereby endorses the fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing and enjoy all other housing, housing-related services of their choice on a non-discriminatory basis as provided by federal and state law. And be it further resolved that the chief executive officer of the Town of Bethel or his or her designated representative is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be a victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice within the Town of Bethel and for advising such person of the right to file a complaint with the State Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, parentheses CHRO, or the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, parentheses HUD, or to seek assistance from Connecticut Fair Housing Center, Legal Services or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to equal opportunities. Adopted by the Town of Bethel, we'll put in today's date, so I'll put that as a motion for adoption.
Good.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Next, the, next to last item is consideration of resolution authorizing the first elected to negotiate and execute all necessary contract agreement documents on behalf of the Town of Bethel with the Department of Transportation. The deal with this is, you'll probably remember about 18 months ago, DOT, in an effort to speed up the approval process for local projects, especially those under state and federal transportation grants, adopted a master transportation agreement system. So you sign one agreement for the year and then you're free to, you know, to implement whatever comes down from DOT. So this resolution, Marty, did you have anything to add to that?
No.
All right, so, so this is a resolution that we'll need to adopt to allow me to negotiate. Be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen for the Town of Bethel that I, Lisa Burr, Town Clerk, a municipality-owned, municipality organized under the laws of the state of Connecticut hereby certifies that the following is a full and true copy of the resolution adopted at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Bethel duly held on the second day of April 2009. Resolution authorizing the first elected Matthew S. Knickerbocker to negotiate and execute all necessary agreements and contract documents on behalf of the Town of Bethel with the Department of Transportation and the State of Connecticut for state matching grant program for elderly demand response transportation and to affix a corporate seal.
Second.
Okay. Any, any questions?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Last is the approval of minutes, public hearing from Tuesday, March 19th. That was a public hearing on the Rizzo lease of the old TD. I made a motion to accept.
Second.
All right, I made a motion to accept.
Matt, you can't make it.
Oh, okay.
I have to abstain, I wasn't there either.
Well, I could make the motion, I just can't vote on it.
I'm sorry, I thought you said, yeah.
Yeah, I can't vote on it, that's okay.
Can I?
All right, then you can approve it. That's fine. You're the only one there.
Motion approved.
Marty's got it.
Marty was there. Marty, you can vote.
I haven't had a chance to speak to DM, but there's a couple of things in here that are, that you might want to change, just if somebody reads through this, it's not going to, like, for instance, A. Olson made a motion, which was second by Robert Fowler, nominated Alice Hutchinson, moderator, vote, motion approved. And then it says nominations are closed.
That's, that was for last night.
That was the last night.
That's not what you're talking about?
No, a public hearing on the Rizzo.
On the Rizzo. On the Rizzo lease, it's from March 19th.
I apologize, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I read the wrong one.
We haven't, we haven't done those yet.
Yes, right. So I'll talk to you about that after.
All right. Okay, so, all right, so those in favor, Richie just to vote yes.
Yes.
Paul and I abstain, that's fine. And then the second is, I'll make a motion to approve, accept the minutes of the special meeting of Tuesday, March 26, 2019.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. All right, lastly, now we can adjourn and go home.
No.
Oh, that's right, you guys.
Rich, you want to put yours, I'll leave mine till last.
His, I think is going to require executive session.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. And mine is going to be, I'd like to talk about tolls and taxes. Okay?
Okay.
I'm going to make a motion to that, to accept it.
Okay.
To add it to the gen?
As a suggestion.
Okay.
Who's second?
Second, I'll second.
All right, so that would be item number 12.
Right.
So what is this called?
Tolls and taxes.
Well, consideration of.
Discussion.
Discussion, no.
Okay.
All right.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'm going to abstain from that, but, okay.
Rich?
I have a report to talk about.
No, no, yeah, that's, yeah, that's fine.
Essentially, you know, I've been thinking about, we as a legislative group, when you think about what's occurring up in the state, and here locally, we're trying to get our own budget intact, and thinking about our legislators, are they really representing us on this particular issue? Yesterday, the Town of Milford put out a resolution against tolls. The city of Danbury is considering a resolution, however, the Chamber of Commerce of Danbury has gone up to Hartford to testify against it. And needless to say that when you think about our residents, we're really trying to stretch dollars here, you know, on, on an individual basis. So my feeling is it's really time for us as the legislative group here of this town to represent the residents. And I don't know of one resident in this town says, I want to pay tolls or I want to pay more taxes. Right now, we're going through this budget process and it's, and it's really starting to bother me, especially when, you know, some, some people are saying, you know, the budget is too high, we haven't even approved that yet, okay? There are others that say, it's fine. But at the same time, I'm taking a look and we've all campaigned and people have told us in the past, you know what, there's only so much money in the wallet. And I think we're approaching that point, especially when the state is talking about taxing sugar drinks, plastic bags, and it keeps on going, the taxation. Tolls, to me, there's a lot of people that commute. And needless to say, if you take the example which was published in the Danbury News Times, if you, if you take the distance, say, between Bethel and Hartford, you know, it's roughly, if you have the EZ Pass, two and a quarter, I think that they quoted, okay? I know it was quoted for between Stanford and New Haven. It's approximately the same distance. That's like 450 a day. You round it out, it might be up to five. Five times five is 25 bucks per week. $100 a month, $1,200 a year, and people are saying, I can't afford $200 increase on our, our residential taxes. It's not, it's coming to a point from my perspective of saying, you know, we as, as legislators, okay, to this town, we really have to, and I have to say that I look at both state, the state senate as well as the state, the representatives of the House, are they really representing us? I don't even know of one right now about this toll issue.
Well, excuse me, just for a second, just so you know, I know that Mr., our current representative that represents Danbury, Bethel and Redding has come out on record that he's opposed to it. And so are two other legislators in Danbury opposed to it and this one, the senator from Danbury is also opposed to tolls. They've all come out on record. They're one of the few groups that have said publicly that they are against the tolls and they're not going to vote for it.
Well, one of ours, I know, is voting.
I don't know about the gentleman in Brookfield.
I don't either. So my, my feeling is, I'm just going to.
Well, he's, he's against it too.
Okay.
Yeah.
My feeling is that we should come out publicly and say that we're against tolls. Now, I just put this together. I'll give everybody a copy, pass one down to, I'll let you do. I've got one for you too. Pass it down. So, Marty, I've got mine.
Thanks.
Thank you. I'm trying to take it, take it ahead. And basically what this says is that we, the Board of Selectmen, this is a resolution in the Town of Bethel and its residents oppose all tolls in the state of Connecticut. The toll burden will fall upon all Connecticut residents. Presently municipalities and their administrations are managing budgets that may require adjustments to both municipal and education spending for taxable affordability. Many businesses in our town feel that tolls will negatively impact commerce. Furthermore, the cost of living will increase since all of our goods are delivered by truck. The end result is that every consumer purchases will increase when business pass these higher transportation costs. Additional factors for our town residents who commute through the state will have negative consequences in implementing these tolls for the working class residents, all of whom utilize the highway system. The intended results will be that there will be less money each week in every household. Therefore, we urge Bethel's legislators in both House and Senate to vote against the proposed tolls. It's that simple.
Oh, I would vote against your motion.
Okay.
Because I believe, I think they should be some type of tolls. I really do.
Okay. See, I'm looking at it from a pass through. I use that, I use that example, what is it going to cost if somebody just commutes?
Well, I'm, let me, let me throw a couple of comments in here. I would also try to avoid this for, for different reasons. My, my feeling is I'm agnostic on tolls, but go back to your, it's a word I learned from my father in Korea. I, I actually do know people who have said to me, I'm okay with tolls because I understand that the state has a transportation problem. Way back, going back to 1999, when I first got on the Board of Education, I remember talking about this, about the issue of non-binding resolutions. We made it a policy of the Board at that time to stay out of things that were, any kind of non-binding resolution that wasn't a direct business that was within our purview just because I believe that we should focus our attention to the things that are, that we directly control. I do, I am aware, I've been reading in the press that a few towns have adopted a resolution, but one of the things that I do worry about is up at the state level. But one of the things that I do worry about is up at the state level, there, there's a, there's a, there's an issue with credibility with the towns, and even, even CCM had to struggle with this. And that is, the legislators look at these resolutions and they say, you know what, doesn't matter what we do. You know, we, we got a problem that's this big, here's one section of a solution. And no matter what we put in there, all these guys are going to say, no, we don't want to do that. They, 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 they want the ECS to keep coming, they want to have town aid road grants, they want to put steep grants back in. But anytime we try to fix something that's going to involve a little bit of revenue, then, well, no, we don't want that solution, and we don't like this solution, and we don't like that solution. It's hard to make a, a resolute policy over everything, especially when this is still in motion. Because I, because I know that one of the things they're talking about, if they do tolls, and again, that's not assured at all. In fact, I think that it's less than fifty-fifty right now, as to whether or not it's going to pass. What they're talking about is a decrease in the gas tax. So they're going to start shifting, instead of just, you know, so you, you'd have a decrease in one area and increase in another area. We have, at this stage of the game, we have absolutely no idea how that's going to turn out. So I wouldn't want to adopt a resolution on behalf of the people of Bethel, seeing as how we really haven't had a discussion with any more than a handful of people on either side of the coin, to see what they have to say about it. So I've talked to people who say, I, I hate tolls. I've talked to people that say, I hate tolls, but I'm okay with it, because I get it.
I, I look at it strictly from a financial point of view, with each family. And it's going to have an impact, you know? We have our little projects here and there in town, and, you know, if you go to people in our town and say, listen, we need, need approval for this, you know, then they cost them maybe a hundred dollars per year. But, you know, you know, but at the same time, you, you got to draw the limits. And right now, the state, the way it's going, you know, especially in transport, the reason I picked on transportation, because we voted in the last election, a lockbox. But that lockbox is like Swiss cheese. You know, you, you can steal from it anytime you want. And, you know, the state just has a history of it. And I, I can see all these revenues coming in, and suddenly, you know, we're still in deep trouble. So this was the reason why I pursued this, because this is something very visible and something that people are screaming about.
Well, I, I appreciate the, the work you put into it, I appreciate your time.
It was just thinking on my part.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't preclude this forever, but tonight I wouldn't want to vote on it. What do you, what's your feeling?
No, I, I wouldn't vote on it.
But let's, let's see what they do.
Okay.
Maybe if it gets worse, I'll change my mind and say, alright, policy be damned, let's do that. Okay, Rich, you know, you had a.
Okay, oh, I, I'd like to discuss Ten Wister Street. I don't know if you want to go into Ten Wister Street.
Yeah, I think you have to have a motion for property consideration and executive, executive session. Okay, second, those in favor?
Sorry, property what? What'd you say?
Uh, consideration of property purchase, executive session. No, who do you need to?
That's okay.
Yeah, I, I checked with them before.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because I'm so careful with executive sessions.
So we're going to invite in Dion Craig, Bethel Wagner, and Martin Waller. So those in favor?
I need to close the door.
Yeah, those in favor? Aye, okay, so, executive session starts at nine fourteen? Alright, we'll wait. Yeah, we'll wait to, wait to disable the recording.